Okay, hi, today I'm here with Jamison Whiting, who's running for Ward 11 City Council. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure, and thank you Terry for having me here, I'm really excited for it. Again, my name is Jamison Whiting, grew up here in Ward 11, so I was a Halefield/Washburn kid. So, you know, spent my entire youth both on the east side of Nakomas, we were on the west side of Nakomas for a little bit, but have been all around Ward 11 my entire life. My mom is a Minneapolis public school teacher, and now actually lives just one block outside of Ward 11. And so she's very upset that she won't be able to...
Well for you, yeah.
I was like, "Just move in for a year mom, it'll be great." And so, she is in our childhood home just on the other side. Currently work as a city attorney for the city of Minneapolis, doing all of our police reform work. So working directly alongside MPD, Civil Rights, our Office of Community Safety. And then the thing that keeps me sane at the end of the day is I get to coach. I know we were at a grad party together, I get to coach football over at Washburn. And so, I coach both of our men's varsity teams and then our women's now as well. And so I've been doing that with the Vikings Initiative. And so they've crossed the entire city, have done a fantastic program to start flag football across the state. And so I've been coaching that program as well.
Oh, that's fun, yeah. Yeah, it's been fantastic. I wanted my, you know, my son left for college, but I wanted him to get into flag football. I mean, I don't think he was ever really that interested, but I think it's great.
Oh, it is, yeah.
Is Washburn gonna have a good football team this year?
Yeah, we had our first game last Friday, so won our first game, we beat Bloomington-Jefferson. So, went well, I think we have a pretty good team, we're excited for it. They changed our section up a little bit, and so instead of going against, you know, your big wezzetas Eden Prairies, we now have kind of similar competition.
Okay.
Which I think will be able to make a, hopefully a pretty good run in sections. And in the state, and our women's team made it to state, or sorry, to sections for the first time. And this is their first season. And so, I am also very, very excited about our women's chances this coming spring, yeah.
So what team is the women's?
Yep, so it's Washburn too.
But where, I mean, they're not playing football, or they're...
Flag, flag football, yep.
Flag, okay, alright. Well, let's talk a little bit about Ward 11, because maybe you can just give people a general idea of the boundaries. I was looking at it today, it goes all the way down to kind of like the airport.
Yep. Yeah, I'm a little biased, I think it's the best ward in the city.
It's big, right?
Yeah, it is.
Geographically, it's big.
Yes, we have about, and don't quote me exactly, I think it's about 35,000. Most wards in our city are around that. It's probably about the eastern border is the east side of Nakomas, so it crosses over there a little bit. Kind of you get a little bit through Hiawatha, so we don't catch the golf course at all, but it's kind of borders the outline of it. Forty-second to forty-six on the northern end, and then Lindale is the easy one on the western border. Yep, and then sixty-two is the southern border. And so, it's what I keep telling people, I'm like, hey, move to Ward 11, it's a little warmer. We're the southern ward in the city, but it has been a really, really good place, yeah.
Well, before we jump too much into it, I also know Annunciation is right there in your ward. So, just wanted to ask you a little bit about that. Obviously, the whole community's in shock, and the blue and green ribbons popped up all over the place. But, yeah, maybe share your thoughts, share what you'd like to see the city do differently.
Yeah, you know, I think for all of us kind of southsiders and Ward 11 folks, it's been a horrific week for all of us. I was actually just chatting with my wife about a month before this happened, and we were kind of like, hey, there was another shooting, or mass shooting somewhere else in our country. And I was like, the one issue that I'm just gonna not be able to contend and deal with is a mass shooting. And if that affects our city, and then, you know, a month later, we see just the devastation of what that has done to both our community, I think, here in Ward 11 and the south side, but across the city, the state, and this country. And so, you know, in my role now, it's been, it was really hard to both contend with. I have half of my friends, I would say, growing up, were Annunciation kids. And so, you know, I did the wiffle ball, wasn't very good at wiffle ball, but my Annunciation friends let me play on their team. One of my good friends, who I hope ends up running for something in Richfield, is a youth pastor over there, and was over there with the impacted families. We have a few impacted families at Washburn. And so this is something that is deeply personal, I think, for a lot of us. But it's one of those things, and as we've kind of talked about it, is this is not like revitalizing downtown that has a multitude of different things to kind of fix the issue. I think we all know that banning assault-style weapons, banning high-capacity magazines is how you end these things. I think it is a very clear-cut way to stop the murder of our children, both at our schools, churches, across this country. It is the, I think, the number-one fact that is so entirely distressing to me. And I think many in this city, and especially in blue cities across this country, is that the highest cause of death for children in this country is gun violence. And that is entirely preventable, and it's not cancer, it's not poverty, it's not childhood hunger, it's guns. And so I think we have to be extremely clear with what that is, and the solutions for it. It's getting guns off the street. And so, we've seen it, I think, with our mayor, our council members. I think what the city does and can do is be a vocal advocate, and be very, very clear in that stance of we are not accepting this level of violence and these tools and weapons of war in our city, and they shouldn't be. And so, and you see it, I think we were just talking briefly before this, but, you know, seeing Tim Walz probably calling a special session here. But, you know, those that are impacted, I think, making sure their voices are heard at both the state and federal levels as well, yeah.
Well, I think that it was just today that Walt said he's gonna do that. Obviously, there's a lot to be seen as to where that goes, because I think he can call the session, but the legislators has to take up the issue, right? So, and it's not clear that they will, but I think they seem to want to get Republicans on the record for, you know, not standing up for, to prevent stuff like this from happening again. So, yeah, I'm sure when you ran, obviously this was not on your radar, wasn't on anyone's radar. But maybe tell me a little bit about what motivated you to run?
Yeah, you know, and I think, right, I don't think this was necessarily on my radar. It's, I keep, I've been working for the city of Minneapolis, you know, around the city my entire career. And so, it's gotten harder and harder jobs, is what it's looking like. And this is, I think, another avenue in a tougher job. But for me, I don't think I would be standing here if it wasn't for the city of Minneapolis. You know, when I was growing up, I think this city does what this city does best, and we saw it. I think we're seeing it now, after the tragic situation in Annunciation. But this city wraps its arms around people. And so I think when our city does the basics, the municipal basics really well, your teachers, your coaches, your neighbors, your community really is able to wrap its arms around individuals that need it. And so that was kind of my position, honestly, growing up. And once I got to college, kind of was able to get to that point of being able to take a breath and kind of take stock of, okay, well, what do I want to do with my life? And I saw that being of how I can best support my city, that got me to this point. And so, I've been trying to do that, I worked at a Fager Drinker, and so that's Minneapolis's largest law firm. I was doing both kind of a corporate non-profit, or sorry, corporate law, and then also non-profit law as well, kind of helping our, you know, Minneapolis foundations, cargo foundations, and then, you know, Pentair's, these large corporations, and then their foundations as well. And seeing how they both impact our city of Minneapolis. And then, obviously, I've been coaching, and so trying to figure out how best I can support my city and the city that kind of helped raise me and made sure I was here. And so I see this as another step in this direction, as, you know, we are in a transformational point, I think, in the city of Minneapolis right now, and seeing where our city will go in the next four, eight, you know, years. And so, for me, it's been really important of having folks that are committed and from the city that want to do the good work, because it's tough. So, as I am figuring out a little bit more.
So, I mean, it is interesting, I think you would be the only candidate that has like such a clear link to younger people in the community. And then, how long have you sort of been in the role with the city?
Yeah, yeah, and so, and I think, and you said a good point, right? And so I've been coaching football at Washburn officially for five years, but have been in a capacity ever since I left. I think our youth is where this city kind of stemmed, and our future is based on what we do with our youth. But I've been with the city of Minneapolis now, City Attorney's Office, for about, oh goodness, probably just, just over two and a half years now. Was prior to joining the city officially, I sat on our Civil Rights Commission for the city of Minneapolis. So, did that about a year before joining. But yeah, I've been in the City Attorney's Office now doing, we call it our implementation unit, for, yeah, just over, I think, two and a half, two and a half years, yeah.
So, is it kind of safe to say that one of the reasons for running is to kind of continue the work you're doing with youth? Certainly, a lot of what the city passes in terms of like violence intervention and stuff like that is directly aimed at the youth. And then, you know, obviously, a lot of people with legal backgrounds run for office, so a lot of legislation to read through.
Yeah, no, it is, and I think, right, it's kind of the fun fact here is, I think, both, I think, and and I haven't confirmed completely, but if I was elected, I'd be the only city council member that's graduated from Minneapolis Public High School. And so that is something that I'm very proud of, I'm a very proud Washburn Miller. But then, again, the other piece of it is, but it's directly come from, I know Elliot Payne and a few others have worked for the city of Minneapolis before, but there's not a lot. And so I think that has been something that has given me the experience for this role. I think should be actually a prerequisite of running for office, is working for the city of Minneapolis first. And so, I think my experience with kind of police reform and public safety, working alongside MPD and our Civil Rights Office, and, you know, Commissioner Barnett with the Office of Community Safety, has been particularly helpful on seeing how the city is gonna move forward in the next, you know, this next kind of cycle. And so I do think it is extremely pertinent of what the city will do. It is, I've kind of looked into some of the committees and some of the things. The only one I'm really excited about is our subcommittee on the consent decree and settlement agreement, because I think that's where a lot of our really, really good work in the city of Minneapolis will come from, but yeah.
Well, there's one thing I would sort of push back on there, is I don't know about a prerequisite of working for the city to become, but it would certainly be nice to see that every councillor had some work experience before going straight into the city council. So tell me, what are your top three issues, what you're gonna be promoting during your campaign?
Yeah, you know, and we've been extremely consistent from the front. I think it starts with public safety. I think if you don't have a safe city, a city where you can feel comfortable going to school, going to your parks, walking around for all residents, no matter you're zip-crowded across the city, I think if you don't have that, it's hard to do everything else. And so I think it first starts with, with public safety, and I'm happy to talk to you for hours on public safety. I think that is our first main kind of bell cow kind of issue.
Well, let's dig into that a little bit, and I did see like a survey that Emily Koski's office did about Ward 11 and their priority issues, and community safety was by far the top one. But it means so many different things to so many different people. So, does it mean sort of the alternatives to policing? Does it mean increasing the police? Does it mean having a civilian review board over the police? So maybe just give a little bit more detail of which of the kind of, all the different programs available that you support.
Yeah, and so directly my role now is specifically with our both community engagement, and then I do officer health and wellness in my role now. And so, I think what it first is making sure that we have more officers, and not just any officer off the side of the road, but officers that are well-trained, accountable, and that are trusted across our community. And that is something that, you know, I've really appreciated about our chief's leadership, is he could pick anybody off the street right now, right? We've seen our ranks dwindle, so from, I believe it was about 900 before COVID, and then the unrest after George Floyd, and we are around, I believe, I think we just came over 600, I think, now, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's like 612 or something.
Yeah, but we've been, you know, that has been an intentional effort of recruiting officers that are both, I think, invested in the city. We've seen previous to that, I think that 900 number about, oh goodness, I think it was about 97% of our officers lived outside of the city. This new class of recruits, it's been the largest class that have either grown up here or currently live in our city. And I think that is extremely helpful. But then it's the piece of doing this work, and it's, as I've kind of heard the narrative, I thought our officers, prior to joining my job, were like, hey, no, we got this, we don't need any help, we're doing it fine over here. But when I got there and started talking to officers, officers were like, I am not a mental health specialist, I am not an addiction advocate, I am not a homeless provider. And that's 90% of their job right now. And so a lot of our officers have said, you know, we need folks to kind of come in, do this work, so that we can do the things that we're trained for. And so I see it as, it's what our Office of Community Safety calls, it's our public safety ecosystem. And so it is making sure that we have that level of law enforcement, your traditional law enforcement response, as well as your crisis intervention, BCR. It's the thing that I get like super nerded out around, is our joint response model.
Have you had a chance in your role to like go to any of the centers, or drive-arounds, or stuff like that? I mean, it sounds like in your role, you'd be pretty close to both the officers and some of these other programs.
Yeah, exactly right, and so I'll give you a little, a fun tidbit. When I was joining this role, the way it was put to me was, your job is to come in and fix the relationship between the community and the police. And so I was like, go ahead.
Just a small ask.
Exactly, so it is why I've probably gone gray a little bit here. But no, so I do quarterly ride-alongs with our officers. And so I've gotten a really good chance to kind of see what it looks like of, you know, on the beat, on the street kind of interaction with officers and community officers, and responses officers, and responses that they are like, I probably don't need to come to this. Officers and response with BCR, and our crisis intervention specialist. And so particularly, I think what we are seeing, and what I am really excited about, is our joint response model. And so, the settlement agreement doesn't say it as much as the consent decree is. And I know we don't have the consent decree because of Donald Trump and their Department of Justice, but we are committed to, you know, pushing every single reform in the consent decree forward. And that piece is our joint response model. And it will be extremely expensive, it will be, you know, require a lot of staffing from both MPD and our, you know, kind of non-violent crisis response individuals. But it would be officer, an officer and a, you know, crisis, non-violent professional going along with an officer. And so, an officer might be a first responder in that situation, or secondary, depending on the call.
So, just so I understand, this is coming, something that's intended for the future, is to have a...
Correct.
Kind of an armed officer and a non-armed citizen, or...
It would be like a mental health professional, crisis intervention specialist, somebody that has more of that training when we see people in crisis that have more of a background and a training in that, but also having a officer, an armed officer, a traditional officer in response with them. And so that is, that's the thing I've been really, really excited about, and it's hopefully coming here.
Well, that will certainly be expensive, like you said, if those are city employees, for sure. And I guess the idea there is to improve interactions when an arrest is being made or a call is being made, is that...
Yes, both approve interactions, but also kind of not, what officers are seeing when they come to a scene where it is a non-violent scene, but it's a person that is experiencing some level of trauma or mental health crisis. A lot of the times, just being their position of officer will raise the temperature. And so what officers are asking for, hey, I just come in just by virtue of being an officer, and it raises the temperature. And so, what other cities have done, and it's why consent decrees have this in them, we're looking kind of at Baltimore, New Orleans, a few other cities that have done this. You have a joint response model where it does kind of, the initial interaction is led by a crisis intervention specialist or a mental health provider that is able to come in, have that initial interaction, and hopefully lower that temperature. But are there, our traditional law enforcement officers are there if something does arise that needs that level of response.
So, I'm trying to get a complete picture of like where crime is at in the city, or safety, and it's really difficult right now, I think, because there's all these statistics saying it's gone down. And yet, then we hear about all these windows being broken, and obviously we've had some, several mass shootings in addition to Annunciation recently. Where do you place the city? I mean, are we improving, steady, declining? I mean, my general impression is that we're improving, but it's hard to gauge.
Yeah, and I think, being very clear at the forefront of this, and I have zero tolerance for gun violence, any level of individual violence in our city. I think that is something that we need to be a little more on the front and for, because I think any loss of life is a tragic situation, and one is more than we need, or than is acceptable. But we have seen a, actually a large decrease in violent offenses, violent crime. So violent crime across the board of our city has gone down. A lot of our cities right now are comparing them to, right, pre-COVID is kind of the number, or when it kind of, kind of where it started. And so we're getting back to pre-COVID numbers with our violent crimes, but our property crimes and crimes of opportunity have kind of stayed consistent. Those haven't dropped as much. And so, whether that is a, you know, investment into more officers for a police presence, whether that is, you know, after-school activities for our youth, you're seeing kind of drastic improvement in Baltimore, Birmingham, of when they are investing into activities for youth after school. Their crime goes down, property crime goes down, crimes of opportunity go down. And so, I think we are seeing these numbers, right? Especially after it's hard, after this last week in Minneapolis, to say violent crime is going down. But as our statistics are showing, violent crime is going down, property crime, crimes of opportunity are kind of staying at that spot.
So, there was an article in today's paper about gangs, and how, I guess, in the south side, it's mostly like Bloods. So they were highlighting the basketball program at Sabatheny.
Yeah.
Do you feel like the city is making headway on the gang situation? I have no way of knowing, like...
Yeah, and it's, I think it's helpful to look at, again, kind of our historical measures. If we kind of look at the 1990s, early 1990s to kind of late 1990s as well, it's kind of when we saw that largest uptick in kind of gang-related organized crime. It's gotten better again, but then COVID threw a wrench in everything, as COVID has done. I think we're again getting back to a point, and it goes in lines, it's your point, right? Of what I've seen is a drastic decrease in investment in Pearl Park, in our public parks across the city of Minneapolis, which goes into my, you know, our second thing that we are, our campaign has been very focused on, but our parks and our schools. We've seen a decrease in those after-school programs, community programs that are targeted at youth that are vulnerable, youth that are more consistent, that are in these areas, are more vulnerable to those. And so, I think that is another piece, and to, not to jump ahead again, but this is another very, very large aspect of our campaign.
We can jump ahead there, so if community safety is priority one, or top three, two, it sounds like you're advocating for more youth programs?
Yeah, and so it's public schools and public parks. And so when we are on the doors, both kind of, for me, growing up, our schools and our parks were my favorite thing about Minneapolis, and Ward 11 as well. And so I say, and it's great you brought up Emily's, Councilmember Koski's survey, but it's kind of consistent with that says as well, and we've knocked over, oh goodness, probably seven, eight thousand doors at this point, and the number-one thing we hear is public safety, and then it's our public schools and our parks. And as you know, right, people are very, as it's, I bleed orange and blue, and my wife is a Laker, but we are very...
And Ward 11's got some great parks, right?
It does.
Lake Nakomas.
Yep, Pearl, yep, Diamond Lake, you have Todd Park, you have all of these parks in our ward. I mean, the creek, if you count the creek as a park, which I do, my mom likes to inner tube down the creek. And so, I think that is probably the most park thing you can do.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, I think investments in our public schools and our parks, and I know that doesn't necessarily fall within the purview of Minneapolis City Council, but every auxiliary piece of our public schools and our parks are things that take the burden off of those, you know, the school board, our MPS, and our park board takes the burden off of those things. And I think really good relationships with those park board members and our school board members is entirely important to have those conversations. And then, again, to really take the burden off of our schools and our parks in areas that we can as a city.
So, whether through coaching or other activities, have you gotten to meet some school board members? Do you, I mean, it seems like in your position, you'd be pretty tied in to what's going on with this?
Yeah, and even before, even before I decided to run, I had good relationships with our school board, obviously being with the coaching at Washburn. But our campaign has been endorsed by the two school board members that represent Ward 11. So, Lori Norvell and Greta Callahan have both endorsed our campaign. So that's been, it's been really good to have a open lines of communications with them. And kind of, you know, this is all brand-new to me, I've never run for office before.
And I'm, it makes me wonder, I, like, I kind of know what Ward 8 looks like in terms of demographics, but Ward 11 is, you know, what are sort of the demographics? Does it have a lot of people over 65? Does it have a lot of young families?
Yeah, that's a great question. Yeah, and it's, and so I think it's helpful to even talk about like the homeownership and then the living situation, I think is a good example. And so Ward 11 is the highest homeownership ward in the city. So we are around, I think it's somewhere between 85 to 90% homeowner in our city. And so, but it is not a Ward 13 or Ward 7, that is usually a larger or higher-income ward. And so it's a lot of single families, single-family homes, kind of that in-between your first home and then kind of maybe that second after your starter home. But it's a lot of folks that really, again, care about the schools that they move into, and so, because they're gonna be sending their kids there for the next, you know, K through 12. And so it is, our demographics are, it's been pretty consistent, to be honest. We have a fantastic senior population that is very involved. And so that's the piece that I really like about it, it's not a, it is not a kind of retiree-type of hang out and do nothing, it's a very involved senior community as well.
I haven't been to any of them, but I've intended to and not made it, but it seems like there's a lot of sort of seniors come and meet your councillor type meetings in that ward.
Yeah.
But 85% homeowner just makes me, it's funny, I think that's probably why Ward 11, this race is, I think fair to say it's kind of gone under the radar a little bit. I mean, there's some much high, more high-profile ones, and it's probably due to not having quite as much tension.
Yeah.
But in that survey, I spoke about affordable housing was still a number two. So, I don't know what that means, if those young families having a hard time moving up to a bigger house, or...
Yeah, and it's, and this is, this is, again, I'm like, you're reading my mind, but number three is kind of our, the other piece is affordable housing and housing affordability, both for homeowners. As we're seeing kind of the average median home price go up, especially in Ward 11, in property taxes, right, going up across our, across our city. And particularly on an 85 to 90% homeowner ward, that is gonna be a concern. And our rental prices, right, across the board, ensuring that, you know, our rents keep pace with paychecks as well. And so I think housing affordability is huge, and it's one of the pieces, I'm like, my dinner table conversations have gotten really boring, because as you've met my wife, but my in-laws as well, my wife is a policy advocate for all of our affordable housing providers in our state. And then my father-in-law is the CEO over at Art Space, and so they are the largest... And so they are the largest housing provider for, affordable housing provider for artists in the country. And then my mother-in-law is the executive vice president at Common Bond, which is the largest affordable housing provider, um, across the Midwest. And so we've really gotten into, it is, I'm like, I could, again, I can nerd out on affordable housing. If you, if you want to join us for dinner, it's going to be boring, but yes, please.
Civic question, there's that, um, area kind of just north of Bachmans or Longlendale, there was a fire there.
Yep, yeah, Vivo owns it, yeah.
An SRO hotel maybe, but when you drive by there, it's, it, it seems like not a lot's happening. Do you know what's the future of that?
Yes. And so it's in two segments right now. And so you have, and I, I'm pretty sure this is correct, but I'm pretty sure Vivo owns it. Um, and so there is a, there is kind of the motel and it's both kind of, uh. It used to be a motel that you both used to be kind of.
I don't think it's operational.
It's there, it's currently operational. There is a certain part of it that is, um, there's like the, the lower lying traditional motel that it's, it's the white one. Um, that didn't get as burned in the fire. That is just a few of it, that is operational. Uh, but then there's that other piece more, if you're going north of the city, going north, there's that piece that is not operational. Um, and I'm not sure what is going on with that portion, but the, the, the other motel piece is, uh, is currently operational at the moment. Yeah.
Well, I hope they do something there.
Yes.
I don't know who the owner is or, um, but it's been kind of a, um, pain. Pain point, I would guess for the Ward eleven residents for a few years now and, um. Yeah. So not to distract.
I think it's, it's exact, I think this leads directly into, I think in a segue, I think it's indicative of what is happening with our affordable housing providers in the state and across the country. And so not to be alarmist, uh, but our affordable housing providers are at an extremely critical point. Um, and a lot of them cannot afford to keep their doors open, um, and right. And I think we see, uh, as we kind of see a housing crisis across the country and as we see in, in the city of Minneapolis. I think we're doing better than other cities, but we still see it here. If those doors start to close, it is only going to exacerbate, I think, our issues in the city of Minneapolis. And, and that is a real possibility.
And, and what are the economics at play that are making it so hard on them? Is it interest rates? I've heard, um, the cost of, uh, labor, material.
Insurance is huge. Insurance is probably the largest uptick, um, that they've seen. And so, uh, as California and Florida and places that have larger natural disasters, um, increased premiums for everybody. Um, it is, it is extremely hard for our housing providers or affordable housing providers that are already at a. And so folks don't know with, uh, affordable housing, a lot of folks, I should say, um, affordable housing providers, if you use, uh, Lytech. And so it's a low income housing tax credits. Um, you're already at, you're already have a rental cap. So you can't raise your rents based on a specific federal number. And so what we're seeing, a lot of affordable housing providers are already capped. Um, you have the COVID and the pandemic. And so pre-pandemic, I would say it was about, they said, I think it was around eighty percent of they would get their rents paid. Um, with the eviction moratorium and rent moratorium, uh, that dropped down to sixty to fifty percent. And so they have just not been able to catch up on a lot of those. Yeah.
So that was a, a lot of technical.
Yeah. Sorry. I told you, I could, I told you I could nerd out on it.
Yeah. One piece I, I, I want to kind of go back on it's like the Lytech you mentioned?
Yes.
So is that essentially like if you take this government subsidized loan, you're agreeing to like limit?
Correct.
Okay. And so that made me, um, just think about, I mean, obviously one of the big issues in this election is. The whole idea of rent control.
Yep.
And I'm just curious about your thoughts on that.
Yeah.
Is it, does across the board rent control work? Are there certain situations where it would work? Like where do you?
Yeah. And, and I think very clearly I, I'm not in favor of rent control. Uh, I think it is, it is, uh, we need to ensure that rents again, keep pace with our paychecks. Uh, I think we've seen the St. Paul as an example of where that has not been helpful. I know they did a, I think it was the Star Tribune did a study over the, I think the, the, the life, uh, the longevity of, of, um. Rent control in St. Paul and they saw the numbers, I think it was like three percent or something. And St. Paul was the average increase in rent year to year, um, and Minneapolis was somewhere around like two point five. Um, and that was with St. Paul's rent control. Um, and so, uh, I think again, Minneapolis is doing extremely well compared to other cities. I think we're in the top ten of rental affordability. Um, but again, what housing experts are saying, um, my, my wife and in-laws and others that are in this space is. You need housing across the affordability spectrum. Um, that is both kind of your, you know, high-end luxury apartments. Um, it is your deeply affordable, it's usually, I mean, how you define it, it's about sixty percent area median, area median income is. Deeply affordable housing, um, you need that, but you also need, you know, the piece missing middle, right? And so what we have a lot of, or, or sorry, are missing a lot of in Ward eleven, um, are places that. Uh, it's what we've been telling people on the doors that if you want your kids to move back, they have to be able to afford to move into the same neighborhood. Uh, and so it is that kind of, uh, rental, both rental and homes that, you know, are able to be afforded. By every single member of our society. Minneapolis has done, done honestly really, really well across the city, but it's not, uh, you know, we gotta keep doing it.
I was just, uh, I wasn't researching it specifically for rent control. I was, um, but my, my last newsletter, I was talking about homelessness, cause.
Yeah.
Um, and like the role of the county versus the city. And, uh, and, and part of that, I, I looked up like, well, how much are rents going up? What's the average rent? And it was under three percent. It was like two point eight or maybe two point six. Um, and that's without, uh, you know, rent control. But I've also been told that like, and maybe this is related to some of the, the problems that, um. Affordable housing providers are having is that there's really no new construction happening in the city. Like when you look at the permits and stuff way down and it seems like the economics of building are. Difficult right now and I don't know what role the city plays in that. Like unless the city is actually subsidizing directly for building, how they, what they can do to spawn. More actual con- construction.
Yeah. And that's, again, that's a great, I think a great point is, is what we've been talking with both developers, um, affordable housing developers as well, um, renters. Uh, the biggest concern, both obviously with the, the economics of building housing is tough right now. Um, but uncertainty in a city is really, really pausing and giving pause to these developers that would come into a city of Minneapolis. Um, I was just having a, a conversation, uh, with, with a kind of a small developer here in Minneapolis. Uh, and they were saying the biggest thing that is keeping them from, from jumping in is the uncertainty of if Minneapolis is going to follow path of doing a, a. Rent control or if they're not, or what, what they're going to do. And I think a lot of that for them is hard to, you know, all of these, uh, developers and, and affordable housing providers. Are basing their portfolios now, not on year to year, right? These are portfolios based out, uh, fifteen, twenty, thirty years in advance. And so if they can't plan in what that looks like, it is very, very hard to invest, uh, in a city. And so I think that is a, a piece that the city can do, um, is really show certainty on this issue. Um, and being a place that is, I think, both friendly for development and, uh, all types of development. Um, but also I think that the piece that we're, we're missing a lot of as well as, I think. Rent control is a symptom of a, of a larger issue. Um, it's people being not able to afford the rent. Um, and so I think we've seen, uh, every large city is a stagnation of wages. Um, if we were, we were looking into this as, as others of like, when this rent control issue came up and I was like, well. Uh, we want people to be able to afford their rents and be able to, to pay for it and have jobs that ensure that they're able, actually able to stay there. And I think that is, um, where the city can be a lot more helpful.
Well, it's, it's funny, you, you mentioned that because, uh, in that same survey that I. Economic development was pretty low on the list. I mean, it's, I mean, obviously like, um, crime moves to the forefront and you see that all the time. Uh, and it's probably going to be worse after, you know, the last couple of weeks. But in my mind, like that economic development is an important piece because you, if you have jobs.
Yep.
Then it helps people afford rent. I think it helps families, um, pay their bills and reduces crime and all kinds of different things. Um, but it seems like, again, just thinking of that survey, it's like. People are, are like that is almost on the back burner. They're like, take care of the crime.
Yeah.
You know, but I, I, I feel like there's connection there, like there has to be like the, what's going on downtown and no, not having as many businesses. Having closed businesses, um, maybe not so much in Ward eleven, but in other parts of the, the city, like those are related. I mean, when you have blocks that are essentially dark in certain parts of the city, it attracts crime.
Yep.
You know, so.
Yeah. You know, I think it's, it's been, I, I think it's, it's actually a staple of our campaign. It's been nuanced. Uh, I think all of this is a, as we look at the city of Minneapolis, as we look at very large cities that, um, are pushing, right? Minneapolis is a democratic city, as with any of our large cities, um, it is a delicate ecosystem. And, and I think if you move one thing this way, move one thing that way, it's going to affect, affect things. And they all have some level of synergy to them. And I think, like you're saying, economic development and crime in our public schools and our parks. All intertwined in this ecosystem of what makes Minneapolis, in my opinion, the greatest city in the world. Um, but we have to keep it that way, uh, right? If we want it to be this special place that it is, we have to ensure that we are doing the things that ensure our city stays, um, and is better. Uh, and I think that is, that has been a, a piece of our campaign is it, it, it requires nuance to every single one of these issues. Um, that you can think through, have the discussions, have the relationships that matter, um, to move our city in, in a positive direction.
So, um, to, to move things in a little lighter direction, uh.
The economic development isn't.
What about you, uh, sort of, you know, what do you, do you have any hobbies or personal interests? Things that you like to do in the summer that would give residents of Ward eleven a little bit more insight into you.
I used to have hobbies, Terry. I used to, uh, I mean, especially during, I mean, uh, I'm so ready to just have one job again. Uh, but, uh, coaching is, is, is probably the thing that, that really gets me through at the end of the day.
Did you used to play football? Is that kind of the continuation as your?
Yes. Yeah. So I played at Washburn, uh, and then played four years down at the, the University of Northern Iowa. So played down there. And then I'm actually going, I get, I gave myself, uh, one weekend this, for this campaign to get out here. My coach, um, in college now coaches for, uh, the Cleveland Browns. And so a bunch of us are going to go out and catch a game over there. And so, uh, that is, I, I am a Vikings fan, but if, if the Vikings play the Browns, it might be conflicted a little bit.
Well, I heard Jefferson got a little, I saw he got a little heat because people wanted him to be more friendly.
I did see that. I did. I was like, that is a tough place to go and not take pictures.
I don't know how to, to approach that. I can't imagine having that level of fame where people just, uh, but anyway, I. This is about you. Um, so yeah.
Yeah, coaching, yep, coaching.
Football fan.
Yeah. I think we were just talking, we share, uh, motorcycling in common. Yep. And so we, we try to get a ride every now and then, uh, I, I'm a big, uh, I kind of just like doing nothing now. I had a, a mentor of mine who's in public office say, uh, he's like, you know, growing up, he used to go to travel and do all like the adventures and stuff. And now he only goes to, uh, all-inclusives because he doesn't have to plan his day.
Yeah.
I am understanding that now. Like I would love a day where I could just sit down and eat and do nothing. And so, uh, but.
My, my wife and I always debated that with our kids because a lot of, and a lot of times it's like, when you have two young kids, it's like. Vacation just feels like you're feeding them at another location.
Exactly right.
It's like all those chores are still there. You're just in a different place.
Yeah. Yep. As my wife and I are thinking about starting a family, I think we're also thinking about that as well. It's like, okay, well, how does this fit, um, you know, our thing is, and it's what I've said, kind of in this role of, you know. Again, I've never been an elected official before. This is entirely brand new. I've never run for office before. And, uh, if I can still do the things I enjoy, right? I've told people, if I have a vote at six o'clock on a Friday during football season, I might have to miss that one.
So I should, I should point out like, uh, I guess I've sort of made the, uh, assumption with a lot of people that I've interviewed. That you're a DFL.
Correct. Yep, yep.
The endorsement.
We got the endorsement. Yep. One with seventy-seven percent of the vote. Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
In resident.
Yep, exactly right. Yeah, yeah. So grew up in the ward and live in the ward and yeah, it's a, it's a special place.
Uh, any topics that we missed today that you wanted to mention before we?
I think, you know, the, the other piece, I'm like, you know, it, it seems like you know Ward eleven is, as much as us Ward eleveners. I was gonna say, I know you're pretty close. Yeah.
I'm like one house in.
Again, if you want it, it's warmer in Ward eleven, if you want to come down. But I think what we're getting on the doors is, is as much as public safety, um, and, and schools and housing and parks, um, we get toxicity at city hall. Uh, and I think that is, has been a, uh, a stalwart of our campaign. Um, is being like, if you talk about politics of joy, if we talk about wanting city hall to be different, then you have to do something different. Um, and so that is what our campaign has been aggressively, um, pursuing has been, um, something different. Because of what we're seeing, I think, uh, people don't want their local politics to model their national ones.
Yeah. Which is so hard to escape. It really is. It feels like.
It has been.
And, and especially when, um, you know, the budget cuts are being made that are going to impact the city. And, and, you know, you get all the bluster from the federal level and a lot of candidates, you know, for city council. Want to kind of get up on stage and talk about Trump and it's like, well, you can't do anything about him. So.
Yeah. And it's, and it's, and it's what, and I think the best way to combat a federal landscape, Donald Trump. Um, is having the greatest city in the world, right? Is having blue cities that are extremely successful, that, um, are safe, that, um, are able to house everyone affordably. Um, that their public schools and their parks are, are top of the nation. That's how I think you defeat and combat Donald Trump is doing that. Um, and so that's why our campaign has been entirely focused on municipal basics. So that our city is seen as the, the shining blue example, because right, we're all some font of Democrat in the city of Minneapolis.
I like that term. I hadn't heard that before, municipal basics. And you, you know, there's Ward eleven obviously has a lot going for it. And it's, it's funny that, uh, crime surfaces to the top because it's one of the safest wards in the city. And I, I think, um, Page, which is just south of me.
Mm-hmm.
Um, has the lowest crime rate in the city or something. I mean, just really crazy. And so it, it shows how sort of the media around, the perception around crime. I mean, it's like, even if all the windows are being broken in the Northeast, everyone still reads about it.
Yeah. And it matters. And it's what we've been talking about, the reality and perception of crime both matter in the city. And I think what we're seeing is, uh, talking to the toxicity on council and different levels of politics. Um, you have folks that are saying, hey, if this is the reality, then that matters. If this is perception, that matters. Um, and in the role that I am, all of those things are important, right? And so we have to ensure that the, the reality of crime is that is the safest page in Ward eleven and across our city are safe. But that the perception that if you think that you go, you're going to be able to go outside or you can't go downtown, you're not going to go. Right? Even if that is the reality, we have to ensure that the, the perception of crime is also consistent with the reality. And so I think we can combat both of those in, in our city.
So, um, what's coming up for you? Do you have like, um, events you're looking to attract people to your website? Do you want to kind of?
Sure. Yeah. Yep. And so our website, Jamison Whiting for F O R Minneapolis, M P L S dot com. Um, dot com slash org slash all the ones that link to the same place. If you Google my name, it'll pop up. Um, that goes right to it. That'll kind of explore all of our endorsements. Um, and kind of it'll be able to click in, you can donate, you can come door knock. Uh, but what we're really focused on is, is door knocking, uh, getting out the vote, uh, and fundraising. And so.
And I haven't seen, are there going to be any Ward eleven forums?
Yep. September thirtieth. Yeah. September thirtieth, I believe at, uh, Diamond Lake Church. Um, but there is, I can, I can get you the, uh, the info. I can send it to you after this. But yeah, there will be, we had one previous to, uh, caucus and convention. Um, and then it will have another one, um, coming up.
Well, the, the shape of the race has changed a little bit.
It has. Yeah. We have another, we have another, uh, another individual jumped in as well. So.
Well, it's been good talking to you. Thank you for coming in.
Enjoyable. Yeah. Thank you, Terry. Yeah. Enjoyable, yeah, thank you, Terry, yeah.